Oh my God.
Call this meeting the order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, public, and justice for all.
All right, we've got acceptance of two sets of minutes this evening. This is from our meeting of April 21. Public hearing on double JK Ranch and then resolution to reapprove site plan, special use permit, erosion setting control permit approval. Resolution passed six zero with one absence. And then forty-two midfield lane warehouse, we just went over that, we had a site walk. And then when Glowski subdivision, we had a discussion, I think that was following up on the, their site walk as well, and then we had a resolution to declare our intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated secret review. And that passed, and then Stony Brook Estates. We had a discussion about Stony Brook Estates and then two zero two dog tail corners, resolution classifying the action referring to Dutchess County planning. And that passed. And then Harm Valley Homestead, resolution, discussion of Harm Valley Homestead, and then a resolution to release bonds for change a lumber maintenance building. And resolution recommend lease of a performance guarantee for Westchester modular homes. Let me adjourn the meeting. Any questions on the minutes? Okay, I need a motion to accept the minutes of April twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. Motion made by member Palmer, seconded by member Vilano. Discussion, see no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say no. Motion passes five zero with two absences. All right, and then the minutes from our meeting of May nineteen, twenty twenty-five. Got a public hearing on two zero two dog tail corner and then a resolution to grant site plan, special use permit and erosion set of control permit approval for two zero two dog tail corner road eco cabin. Okay, and that, that motion, resolution passed six zero with one absence. And then Harm Valley Homestead, the resolution granting site plan amendment approval to Harm Valley Homestead. And that passed again six zero with one absence. New business file accessory apartment, resolution to classify the action. And then, and that passed, and then a resolution authorizing release of planning board escrows for these various applicants, and that also passed. Okay, and then this is where we had the site walk discussion for when Glowski subdivision and then Stony Brook Estates. And then I brought up about getting an update on the planned community district zoning, so. Any questions on these minutes? Okay, I need a motion to accept the minutes, motion made by member Palmer, seconded by member Vilano. Discussion, see no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed say no. Motion passes five zero with two absences. Okay, next on our agenda is old business, Wingdale Solar. Whoever's a representative from Wingdale Solar would like to come to the podium.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tom Saunders. I am with Rick Energy. I'm coming in place of Rob, who was here before me previously for this project. He is on vacation, so I'm a senior project manager here and I'm helping Rob work in this project with you all in conjunction with him, so he'll be back. That's not the last you've seen of him, but we've resubmitted the project along with our response to the comments we received. The new site plan includes some updated setbacks among other things, and then we also have the updated visual impact assessment, storm water prevention, pollution prevention plan, and acoustic assessment as well. So with me tonight I have Mark, Kate from Wendell, and I have Brendan, who also works with Rick Energy in our environmental affairs and permitting department as well. So happy to take any questions you all have or work through this comment letter if you'd like.
So which penex would have the just site plan that you have on the, on the?
Yep.
Okay, there you go, plant set, there is. Okay, so for everyone's recollection, this is opposed solar farm behind Wingdale Solar that would have Route twenty-two on the west side of it there. The, the school would be this general area, and then old twenty, rather fifty-five goes off in this direction. All right, and the, all right, so your current proposal is still in contradiction with the solar law that Dover has passed, in that the setbacks are not big enough.
Yeah, that's correct. So we are currently working on a formal application to the zoning board of appeals for area variances for both the lot size, which is, I think, about a sixth of an acre, six tenths of an acre under, and then also the equipment setbacks and the fencing setbacks, which are both under. We've, we've taken some steps to increase those in this most recent plan, and they're shown on the table there. But yeah, we anticipate formally applying for those variances this week or next week with the ZBA.
Okay.
The cutoff date is June twenty-fourth for the July meeting.
June twenty-fourth for the July, July what?
June twenty-third for the July fourteenth meeting.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, my recollection is that you have a collection of forty-eight point something or forty-nine point something acres, and the law says you need fifty acres. Okay, and the law states that your setback should be three hundred feet, but that the planning board can allow for a twenty-five percent reduction, which would mean two hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yep, and there are some places where we're down to a hundred and seventy feet here. We're, we're at three hundred feet from the front, but there are some side and rear setbacks that we go down to a hundred and seventy from the lot line.
Okay, and so we're considering the front where the driveway comes off of fifty-five, Route fifty-five.
Yeah, exactly. The front would be the lot line on the bottom there that we're referring to, that we're three hundred feet from that.
Oh, the lot line in the, you're considering that the front?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay, I don't have any other questions at this time. Member Palmer?
Nothing.
Member Williams? Member Littlebode here? Member Vilano? Okay. I guess we'll go to our planner first, Mr. Planner. Let me bring up your memo.
Yeah, so the memo is lengthy. I don't know if I was going to plan to go through everything because we, as you mentioned, the big issue is the ZBA, and I think we can make steps to at least get this referred for seeker to them, and that's one of my recommendations. So and I think we have a resolution prepared to do that, because the ZBA won't be able to act until we finish, the planning board finishes the seeker review. So giving them the opportunity to know that the planning board is going to be lead agency for this, or wants to be, is a good first step in giving them all the information that we've received, all the technical backup and the EAF, et cetera. So you mentioned the setbacks. Those are comments twenty-eight and twenty-nine in the memo, where you mentioned the requirement of three hundred feet and the planning board has the ability to do the twenty-five percent. Yeah, I think it would be really important to try to get some sense from the ZBA what, how they feel about this, only because it's the first project that's being proposed with the new law. You know, it's not as simple as something that's been around for a while, and there could be implications for future projects, so I think it's important to get their feedback. It took a while for the town to get this in place, so.
Can I just make a quick comment? I think when we were just going over the plan, you were measuring the setback from the front property line, but it actually applies to all property lines.
Yeah, I'm saying that the setback, our current plan, the setback to the front, is the one that.
There's one, there's one setback that complies, the rest don't.
Oh, okay, so you comply on the front but not the other property lines?
Yeah, correct, correct.
Yeah. So those are the two big upfront, major kind of comments and, you know, kind of a risk that they're taking as far as not knowing how that's going to play out. We did review all the technical studies again, we did provide additional comments. Like I said, we are prepared to make a referral for seeker that will include all those things. I think it's, they're good enough to refer and also refer to the county, so we'll be able to get some feedback. I do want to bring up a few items. I don't want to go through all the comments, like I said, but I'll bring up a few that I know are important as far as the law goes. The first would be regard to the tree survey, which is something that, you know, the new solar law requires be done.
Which number?
Go to twenty-three B.
Okay.
I highlighted the ones I want to talk about, and that's one of them. So, yeah, the law does require there be a tree survey, an actual report that documents, you know, the DBH for trees, six inches or greater. The applicant's saying that they have twelve point six five acres that's going to be cleared, no more than thirty percent of the site, or the existing woodlands on the site. The law does allow the planning board to waive the tree survey, but I don't think there's enough information available at this time for that to happen. So I think either a site visit or some kind of preliminary report or study that can give the planning board some comfort about what's out there would be beneficial. I know there was a site walk.
We did a site walk some years ago.
There was a site walk several years ago.
Yeah.
Not all, not everyone on this board was there, probably, right?
True.
No. There was one scheduled recently that didn't, wasn't able to proceed because of access issues, so maybe a good time just schedule another one. The applicant can respond to this comment, but the law is pretty clear in what the town wanted to see for all these projects, and I don't think it's something that we can just skip over, per se.
So can I object on that one? See, with the, get some direction from the planning board? Would the planning board accept like a foresters' report where a forester goes out and does an inventory and produces a map versus a survey or location of every single tree? The forest will give you a better report in the sense of the quality of the trees, the life.
Right.
But they won't give you, every single location will give you more, a broader look. In this area, there's two hundred trees of this type, and I find them to be a lot more thorough in information for the planning board to look at versus a survey location where you're just getting two hundred and ten trees and you get in the diameter and the type.
Right.
But no condition.
Right.
So there's benefits on one of, if you really need the location versus a foresters' report, which will give you more quality. And if, usually a foresters' report is easier to do and a lot less expensive.
Right.
So I just didn't know whether, or would be, give some guidance to them on that.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that, you know, part of the rationale for having a tree survey in the, excuse me. I think part of the rationale for having a tree survey in the, in the law is that, you know, it's, I would think in part of the rather large setback, you know, because you can be three hundred feet away, but if it's just three hundred feet of field versus three hundred feet of trees, you know, it's, people, you know, what are people going to see? And, you know, again, maybe, I mean, you have to make whatever argument you want to make with the, the ZBA, but maybe the argument is, hey, we're going to have all this woodlands here, so no one will be able to see it anyway, even if it was whatever distance. So to, you know, Engineer Burger's point, I think it would make sense to, yeah, I don't need to know where every little tree is. I don't think anybody else does or cares. I mean, I remember when we did the site walk, we had, he's the current town board member, but.
He's a forester, yeah.
Yeah, he was a forester, and, you know, his just kind of initial reaction was just like, you know, this is a lot of just kind of scrub brush trees, nothing, you know, nothing really mature here, nothing, you know, that's worth, you know, worth a lot of, you know, for a forester, not worth a lot, but, you know, again, I think there's still the aspect of it being a buffer, whether it's visual or noise or what have you, that is anticipated and probably expected. I would think maybe, you know, just a map that would show like, well, here's where it's forested and here's where the six inch or bigger trees are, you know, just kind of like, you know, just a, you know, green space of where the forest is, and then here's where the bigger trees are, these points.
Forsters to produce a inventory map of most sites, and they're done to that degree, but they're not done to the point of every single tree, more of in this general area.
Right.
There's a hundred to a hundred and fifty trees of this type.
Right.
It's an inventory map.
Yeah, it's kind of like a, when you see habitat survey, where they have the bubbles, the different colors showing this is like mature upland woodland, you know, things like that.
I think that will give the board a lot of information and will help you.
Yeah, and I guess maybe there's just any trees of significance that would be pinpointed, you know? This is actually a two-foot oak or something, or whatever, but probably not.
Yeah, if they find ten or fifteen really significant ones, they usually can locate it pretty close with their handhelds that within this fifty-foot area, there's a thirty-six inch oak that's a hundred and fifty years old.
Sure, sure. I don't know, any other, does the planning board have any thoughts on this?
Sounds like a good idea.
Take the, we'll take the, our engineer's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So.
So, yeah.
For now, not weaving the tree survey.
Right.
Requesting a foresters' report in anticipation of perhaps waiving the survey.
Right, yes, and I mean, yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, the language in the law says that if there's information that the planning board can comfortably think, you know, waive this, right? That could be something that could be used. It says in their opinion, the project will require only minor tree removal. I mean, that's not the case necessarily because of twelve point eight acres, but if we understand the nature of what's being removed a little bit better, I think.
Yeah.
What you need there.
Yeah, I think we have to take into consideration, I know this is the, this would be the, the town of Dover already has a solar farm, but this is the first solar farm under this law, so I think whatever we do then now sets a precedent for, if we say, no, you don't need a tree survey, then the next person who comes might say, well, you didn't make them have a tree survey, so why do we need a tree survey? Thank you, Engineer Burger, for adding that in.
Yeah, so I think I'll just jump in real quick. So we reached out to the consultant we had to do our habitat assessment about this question, about getting more information about the trees there, so I think we're on board with you, we want to provide you more information in some way, so we're happy to do that.
And help you with your zoning application too.
Yep.
Sure, I said, yeah.
Let's jump down to the visual impacts, it's number thirty-eight. So we had asked for the Boyce Park overlook to be looked at, you know, as a, you know, one of the main publicly, publicly accessible vantage points where you can see the site. So they did provide simulations from that location. They also did look at the Appalachian Trail at the request of the board, but it was, I don't know if you, can you bring up the, the actual report? It was the appendix. It's kind of a large file.
Visual impact.
Yeah. I think we have part of it here, too, on paper, if people prefer paper. This is bigger, though.
Yeah, this is good. The, there's one that shows, I think it's a little bit farther out, that shows where the Appalachian Trail shot was from, that one, yeah.
Yeah.
So that number two is where they took the photo from, and it, it looks similar to the spot that Harlem Valley Homestead, I think, because Harlem Valley Homestead's southeast of that, right?
Yeah, on this, on this map, Harlem Valley Homestead would be somewhere here, yeah, right there.
Yeah, it's just, it looks a little different.
Yeah, Harlem Valley Homestead is more directly south of the location. They're, you know, much further away.
They're showing it's kind of facing south, but I think they're probably facing more south, southwest, and that's why you see like a bunch of trees and you don't really see the view that you see of the Harlem Valley Homestead site.
Right.
That's the view that, yeah, that's what we're looking at right there.
So.
That location.
View two, okay.
So my question was, I, I'm not that familiar with the trail in this area, so if the planning board knows of another spot, maybe that's further south, that's, that has a view of Wingdale that we're not thinking of, I just thought it would be worth discussing, but if, if that's really the one, then.
Yeah, I mean, this is from the Boyce Park, the old hang gliding.
Yep.
Location, that wood is probably remnants of the hang gliding platform.
Yep.
Okay, and so you see the.
You can zoom in on that.
The picture here, and then what would it look like if you added that in? Yeah, and in discussing this, I thought this was really the only place you would reasonably see, you know, publicly accessible place, you'd only reasonably see the, the solar farm. You know, the only other place that has kind of a lookout in, a public lookout in Dover would be the end of the Blue Trail of the, for the Dover Stone Church. And again, I think you'd just be, you're looking way off to your right, you're looking miles south, and probably the rest of Cricket Hill would probably block your view of anything on the ground, so I didn't even bring it up, but.
You got to have good eyes.
I guess so.
So this is probably the one that we're going to focus on.
Yeah, the, when you're looking at, when you're, when you're up on the Appalachian Trail and looking at, you know, they, they did it in the direction of their.
Site.
Their site. Yeah, the actual, what, where you would see anything is within, what did you call it? The cone of, the view shed cone? Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there is a.
It's a nice view.
Go there where you can see the Harlem Valley Homestead site pretty clearly.
Everything else in that area, but that's it. You just, you can't see anything either side of that cone. I would, I would certainly agree, just from hiking up there. You just kind of get to this one spot where it's just an opening and you can see, and then you walk another ten, fifteen, twenty feet and you can't see anything. Again, it's just, yeah, so. Yeah, I would, I would certainly accept their, their view shed assessment.
And then on the.
The only, the only view shed worth, you know, the only, the only one that's kind of worth really anything is the one from Boyce Park, I'd say.
Yep, so they did a visual from fifty-five, they did, they did sections from both sides of the site, and I think those are fine, because really, it's really up, up there. Like, you can't see, you can't even see the school from the light in Wingdale, it's so, it's up on a hill, so.
Because this is, yeah, when you drive north on twenty-two, north of Wingdale Elementary, this is all kind of dug out.
Yes.
Over the last.
When you're sitting at the light coming into town and taking a left.
It just looks like a wooded hill, and you're not coming down.
Yeah, and there's, there is a property that has a driveway off twenty-two there that's, I think it's shown a little higher, that one.
Off twenty-two?
Yeah, to the right, you're there, just right there.
Oh, I mean, it's just the open.
Yes, and then there's a hill, a big steep grade to go up, so you're not going to see this from either roadway.
No.
So I think Boyce Park is what we're dealing with as far as the.
Right, I mean, I think, you know, you, not, not publicly accessible, but I, you know, I would wonder what it would look like from various backyards here.
Yeah.
And then that, that also goes to the idea of, you know, how much are you keeping in terms of the, the trees?
Right, so the seeker guidelines don't really call for us to look at private properties, backyards, but if there's a way, we could certainly ask if they can, from the rights of way there, from the streets and the neighborhoods, if there's any way that they can see it, just to give us a sense if there's an elevation change. change or something, if that's something the board can ask for, for sure. But as far as like impact assessment, it's not one of the guidelines that DEC guidance has for
Sure.
Impact assessment, but screening is what you can, you can require to make sure that that happens, so that doesn't cause an issue, so.
Member Palmer, you think you're going to see this from your house?
I don't think so. Yeah, I
I mean, you're the, you're the closest.
Yeah, I would be the closest. I don't think I would
Okay.
See it.
Yeah. Okay, so I just wanted to point, just ask the question about the Appalachian Trail, so I think that's, that's been answered. And then if we go down to
Yeah, I don't think it would.
Uh, let's see. Scrolling down a little further, down to 57, 58?
It's good you numbered them because you'd run out of letters here.
Yeah, I know. This is on the wetlands, you know, since the last, yeah, 57, 58. The last time that the applicant was here was before the new regulations have been in place from DC, so we reviewed the report, then we had some comments, they responded to those. I just want to make sure, it says that there've been, there, that consultation's underway. Can you just explain a little bit more about what exactly you've done? Have you done the JD parcel process, everything like that?
I'm going to tap Brenton in for that one.
Because you do have, there's a wetland like right
Yeah.
Here and some water flows under where your driveway would be, so
Yes.
Just for everyone's recollection.
Yeah, 100% right, that is accurate, that are, there is a delineated wetland right there. Per the new regs, starting January 1st, 2025, there's some extra criteria, as you guys know, is three, 11 extra criteria. We haven't found any that meet that, that this site meets. We are in talks with DEC Region 3 right now, just over the phone, email. They are, in 2022, they had submitted, we had submitted a water quality cert with some extra requests from the DC, which we have now adhered to. One was, for example, wildlife-friendly fencing around the site for sensitive species that may be adjacent to the wetland area. And a, a few extra comments that the DC had requested, we, we fulfill and which we are currently and still in the process and still in talks with DEC, so yes, we're, we're aware of the new regs and all will be, you know, they will all be adhered to.
Do they plan to come out and validate the delineation? Or?
Uh, so that is, that is, that is something we're still trying to figure out with them. We, we are just, we, we, we had sent them the delineation, we had told them that we were staying outside of all the adjacent area of the wetland. We're just doing a minor stream crossing, which would require
It's their, it's the DC's prerogative if they want to or not, right?
Right, if they, well, if they determine that they have jurisdiction over it, which have they given you that indication?
They haven't claimed jurisdiction over it yet.
Okay, so it's Army Corps then, most likely.
So
Crossing.
Update on that, Army Corps had, has recently sent me a, a notice that they did not meet their deadline, their 45-day deadline of a notification, so essentially we are waived from the nationwide permit applicable here, as long as we just follow all conditions.
It's not waived, you basically are granted it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, because they missed that 45-day window where they have to say
You're still obligated to do all the
100%, yeah, you know, culvert size, buried depth, rip rap, all, all those conditions will still have to be met.
Okay, so then what's the difference? Like, what, if they met the 45-day, what would, what would that mean?
It's just the paperwork.
Oh, okay.
Basically, it's just paperwork.
Sure.
There, it's, there's a, yeah, there's, my understanding is there's a specific nationwide permit applicable to like driveways, right? Is that what would have been applicable here?
Well, uh, uh, you're thinking linear transportation project?
You're going under the tenth of an acre nationwide permit.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, right, what's this, just to give us a sense that the, the size of this wetland is, what?
The, of the wetland?
Yeah.
Oh, um, I mean, it's under an acre, right, or a couple acres?
A tenth of an acre is a, same amount that's allowed to be disturbed, the tenth.
Right, so we're disturbing under a tenth of an acre
Oh, you're disturbing under a tenth of an acre.
Stream where they're crossing.
The, the, the wetland itself, is, is this the wetland itself, this?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
The, the, well, I'm sorry.
Go down to the road, sir.
Sorry, the, this is the wetland.
Right.
It's a 100-foot adjacent area.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see, okay, so, let's see if we can zoom in a little bit.
Then there's a stream that's, I guess, intermittent that drains that, that they're going to cross.
Right.
So that's your, under your tenth of acres, the entire area, you have two culvert crossings, right? One's for the stream and then you have
Okay, so, so where the little plus signs are, that's the wetland.
Right.
This is the 100-foot buffer around the wetland.
Which will also not be disturbed.
Right, and then this is the, the
The stream that
Intermittent stream that goes down to your driveway.
Exactly, and we're crossing it right here where that
Right.
And that's, that's our, that's our concern.
So you're disturbing under a tenth of an acre, which is right here?
That, that
Okay, okay, got it.
That's our concern, and that's what we're trying to adhere to.
Okay.
All applicable conditions.
I think our, our wetland scientists had some comments about questions and why that wasn't, why you're not calling the stream a wetland, things like that. I think you'll, you'll see those and plan to respond to those accordingly.
Yes, we'll, we'll consult with the, we'll talk to our consultants.
And whatever you can provide as far as correspondence to the board, I think would be helpful, to show that there's been communication with the agencies, and I, I'd like to show our, my colleagues that as well.
Okay. Planner Warner, anything else you want to?
Those are the main, those are the highlights, really. I think the ZBA thing is, is important to start and, you know, we can, we can get the ball rolling on SEACR. There's a resolution that was prepared by Victoria's office. We can talk about what gets referred. I think there was a, quite a bit of submission that they made, it was like a binder full of materials. It might make sense for that to be sent around, or we could do just the EAF Part 1 and the site plan, but because of all the backup that, that kind of feeds into the, the narrative that they wrote for the EAF, it probably makes sense to have everything go.
Right.
But that could be a
I recommend an applicant put together the binder and put them in like self-addressed stamped boxes so that Marilyn can just put her letter in and then send them out.
Okay.
We're still going to need response from DEC and the JD, right? Because if they claim, if they claim that land at the top, they may claim all the way down to 22, which would then bring it
Yeah, so
Which would supersede the Army Corps' 45-day, so the JD is still in play unless you have gotten a letter saying they aren't taking it, or the time is up and you've provided the proof that they haven't replied back, that's separate from the Army Corps. The JD that you went in for.
Right, so the JD, it sounds like you said DEC is not claiming jurisdiction here. Do you have backup for that, showing that they, for the new regs with like, is that third, that 90-day requirement that you submit a parcel?
You have an Army Corps, are you referring to DC?
DC.
You have one too.
Okay, yeah, so
We can't hear you if you're not at the podium. I mean, we can hear you, but the public can't hear you if you're not at the podium.
That's what complicates it, the DC has added this on top of the Army Corps.
They have a new
So the DC hasn't claimed, hasn't yet claimed jurisdiction. We don't know if they will or not.
But you submitted the JD
Right.
Through the computer.
Parcel JD.
Yeah.
So you know the new
Takes three months at least, yes.
Yeah, okay, so everyone's aware on that.
Yes.
That's where we're at. That's where we're in that window.
Where are you, within the 90 days or three months?
Maybe, I think we got like maybe 40 days left.
Okay, it's a long time.
But we could, we, I, like I said, we could skip the parcel JD and go straight to the regional office since they already have our, this project on their, on file.
That's the consultant option, yeah, which you could do.
Okay, everyone's aware, yeah, so, yeah, that's where, that's where we're trying to head in that direction.
If you could remind the board, what happens on the 91st day?
After 90 days, they must file a letter to them within 10 days, asking them and declaring basically, we have not heard from you in 90 days, we're assuming that it's
Oh, they being the applicant, we need to send something to DC, like, we haven't heard from you, what's going on?
Which gives the DEC 10 more days to, now, if nothing happens
But if you don't send in the letter, then
10 days, a certified letter, and it's from the date of receipt, not the date you send it.
Mm-hmm.
I've sent dozen of these, and within that 10-day, they somehow find miraculously find a way to get us our answer.
Get a response.
I have not seen one that's gone the 100 days yet.
Okay, all right.
Nor have I.
Okay.
All right, so that's helpful to know, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And they're going to get, DEC is going to get this on the SEACR referral, so
Right.
Well aware of what's going on. Yeah, that was it for the comments. I think, I would like the, the applicant to, you know, definitely respond and we can, we're available to meet offline if you have questions on any of these.
Sure.
No problem at all. Including the noise ones, which are pretty technical, and I can include my colleagues on that
Sure. Thank you, Planner Warner. Engineer Berger, do you have anything else to add?
No, I said my piece.
Okay. Attorney Polidaro?
I thought it would be helpful if you could give us a map showing the 300-foot setback line, where that would be around the
Yes, that makes sense.
It might be on the site plan set.
Did you?
Yeah.
I didn't see it, but
Do you mean a map marking where 300 feet Like where would 300 feet, what would that look like if it was 300 feet? Yes.
Sorry?
Yeah, we, we show dimensions from our, the property line.
No, no, I know, I know you have the dimensions of where the things are, but I'd like to see a line that shows what would, where would 300 feet be?
Right, if you comply, so, like if you complied with the law that says 300 feet, what would that look like? If you complied with the law that the planning board allows for 25% variance, what would 225 feet look like? That's a, what Attorney Polidaro was getting at.
Yeah, like where would that box?
Yeah, setback line.
Yeah, right. That, you know, just, I kind of like
Just like the parcels 300 feet into the site?
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Like, you know, sometimes it's, you know, what's, what's an alternative, you know, if it's a, some kind of subdivision, if you didn't do that, alternatively you could do, have done this, other thing, so what would that look like, you know?
You would need that for your zoning application anyway.
That would make sense. Right, because part of their role is to see the amount of burden or
Yeah.
Whatever it would be, right?
Exactly.
Okay, sure. Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Yep.
Thank you, Attorney Polidaro. Anything else?
Um, just, you know, I agree with Aaron. I think we need to dig into the environmental stuff just enough to get to a determination of significance.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think they have to go through the zoning board before we spend too much time on it.
So starting the process
And I get that, yeah, and again, I think you get that. I just want to make it clear for you and the public, like, you, you don't have 50 acres, so we'd have to say no, and if any one of your lines was 224 feet instead of 225 feet, we'd have to say no.
Correct.
So
Yeah, understood.
Just for you and the public to understand, like, we don't have a choice. If you, if you just say, no, this is our application, we'd have to say, okay, that's denied, so, just, that's why we got to go through the, the whole process.
Yep.
So, okay. Anything further? Members of the planning board, having heard from our consultants, if they have any further comments, questions at this time?
None here.
Okay, all right. All right, so we do have a resolution classifying the action, declaring intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated SEACR review for Wingdale Solar. Whereas the applicant, Wingdale Solar PV LLC, has submitted an application to construct a 4.28 megawatt ground-mounted solar energy system on 6435 Route 55, Wingdale, New York, identified as tax parcel number 1326007160-00-055290, and then some more zeros, the property in the RU zoning district and aquifer overlay district totaling approximately 48.3 acres, collectively known as the project. And whereas the project constitutes a Tier 3 solar energy system, which is a permitted use in the RU zoning district, subject to special permit and site plan approval, whereas the project is pictured on, on, on a set of plans entitled Wingdale Solar 6435 Route 55, Wingdale, New York, 12594, site plan approval, special use permit prepared by Wendell, dated 4/30/2025, sheets G001, C101, C102, C103, C201, C202, C301, C302, C303, C401, and C501 through 5, C503. Currently known as the site plan set. And whereas the applicant has submitted Part 1 of a full environmental assessment form, or EAF, with a sup, with supplemental narrative dated November 24, November 2024 pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SEACRA, and whereas in accordance with SEACRA, the planning board is required to determine this classification of the proposed project pursuant to 6 NYCRR, Section 617.4, Subsection B6I. Project that involves the physical alteration of 10 acres of land is a Type 1 action, and whereas the planning board of the Town of Dover has performed a thorough review of the application materials, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a Type 1 action, and, two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated SEACR review and directs its secretary to circulate notice of its intent to serve as lead agency to all involved and interested agencies. Three, directs the secretary to refer the application to the Dutch County Planning Board pursuant to Section 239M of the General Municipal Law. Okay? This resolution is being offered by
So moved.
Member Littlebitter, seconded by
Member Williams.
Member Williams.
I, I, just, just one question, I think I read it in your paperwork at some point. There'll be no pilot involved in this?
Uh, I think no.
With taxes?
I, I think we intend to discuss a host community agreement and a pilot
Okay.
With the town.
We do.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I don't, I don't think I know.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Okay, any further comments, questions? Okay. All right, seeing no further comments or questions, resolution classifying the action, declaring intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated SEACR review for Wingdale Solar. Secretary, please call the roll.
Member Williams.
Aye.
Member Villano.
Aye.
Member Palmer.
Aye.
Member Littlebitter.
Aye.
Chairman Corteen.
Aye. This resolution passes 5-0 with two absences.
Can I ask the applicant to please send me 12 copies of the application, the short EAF and the maps?
It's a full EAF, yeah, the, the EAF Part 1, and the narrative attached to it, the plan set, I think pretty much whatever
The binder.
The binder and materials that the board has is probably
12.
We want 12.
So I can send it out to the interested parties.
Great.
Thank you.
Oh, and just to be clear, as part of the resolution, the interested involved agencies were New York State Department of Natural Conservation, New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, New York State Department of Transportation, Dutch County Industrial Development Agency, the JH Ketchum Hose Company, Town of Dover Town Board, Town of Dover Zoning Board of Appeals, UNICEF Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, NICEG, and the Dover Union Free School District.
Maybe Army Corps can come off now that we know that they can't do anything?
I think we can take the EAF out at this point.
We already passed it.
Hmm? Okay, fine. Cut it off.
Well, they still can object to the agency, right?
Hmm, okay.
All right, anything further for Wingdale Solar?
Did you want to schedule a sidewalk?
Yeah, I guess that's a good question. I mean, I don't feel as though I need to go out there again, but if there's going to be a sidewalk, I'll try and make it. I don't know, does anybody feel like they I don't know, does anybody feel like they need to, or that, you know, if you didn't go the first time, or?
Or second now?
Right.
If anyone wants to go, I'm happy to do it. Access is a little bit of a challenge still, there's lots of ticks and it's wet, so. Do you want to wear some good shoes? I'll trudge out there with you.
Excuse is excuse.
I think we're good.
I was out there earlier and I'm still finding ticks on.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's been a, quite a spring in the, uh, in the woods.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, and my, just my, even my yard. All right, so I, yeah, I think we're fine with, I think we're fine with no sidewalk at this time, I guess, um, I guess based on what we might get back from a forester, maybe we might want to be like, oh, well, let's go see this, but.
Sure.
Who knows? Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is resolution for release of bonds.
Yep.
Okay. Let's go back to that folder, there we go, release. All right, zoom in here. There we go. Our resolution recommending the release of the performance guarantee Dover Solar. Are those your arch enemies, like Wingdale Solar and Dover Solar and, uh, you know? Never even heard them, okay. Whereas my resolution dated January thirty-one, twenty eighteen, the town board granted the applicant Cypress Creek Renewables and Dover Solar L L C a special use permit and site plan approval to construct a three-thousand kilowatt solar farm, known as the project, on property located at Route Twenty-two, identified as tax parcel number seven-zero-six-one-dash-zero-zero-dash-seven-three-zero-three-two-zero in the R U zoning district, known as the project site. Whereas on February five, twenty eighteen, the planning board granted the applicant architectural review board approval and erosion sediment control permit approval for the project, and whereas, as a condition of approval of the erosion sediment control permit, the applicant was required to submit a performance guarantee in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars and an inspection escrow of fifteen hundred dollars. And whereas by resolution dated April one, twenty nineteen, the planning board granted the applicant a one-year extension of time to February two, twenty twenty, to complete the work contemplated under the erosion sediment control permit. And whereas the planning board engineer has conducted a final inspection of the, of the property and by letter received May fourteen, twenty twenty-five, has confirmed that all work authorized under the erosion sediment control permit has been completed and all provisions of the permit have been met. And whereas pursuant to Town Code Section sixty-five dash eleven subsection C, such performance guarantee, uh, shall continue in full force and effect until a certificate of compliance shall have been issued by the authorized official after such consultation with any agencies or individuals as he deems necessary to ensure that all provisions of this chapter and of the permit have been met. Now therefore be it resolved, uh, pursuant to Town Code Section sixty-five dash eleven subsection C, the town of Dover Planning Board hereby recommends the release of the performance guarantee to the town by the applicant. This resolution is being offered by.
So moved.
Member Palmer, seconded by.
Second.
Member Vilano. Discussion. Seeing the discussion, all those favor resol- oh, uh, uh, resolution recommending the release of a foreign's guarantee Dover Solar, Secretary, please call the roll.
Member Williams.
Aye.
Member Vilano.
Aye.
Member Palmer.
Aye.
Member La Robe deer.
Aye.
Chairman Corteen.
Aye. And that resolution passes five-zero with two absences. All right, resolution recommending the release of the performance guarantee S R M Enterprises, Inc. Whereas on December nineteen, twenty sixteen, the planning board granted the applicant S R M Enterprises, Inc. an erosion sediment control permit in connection with a special use permit, site plan approval, and A R B approval for the construction of two thousand four hundred square foot maintenance garage with associated parking and outside storage on a three-point-zero-two acre parcel of property identified as tax parcel number seven-zero-five-nine-dash-zero-four-dash-seven-zero-nine-three-seven in the H C zoning district, known as the project. And where proposal is shown on a plan entitled Site Plan Prepare for S R M Enterprises, Inc., prepared by Zerekian Associates, sheets one through six, dated December seven, twenty-ten, last revised November eleven, twenty sixteen, uh, known as the site plan set. And whereas as a condition of approval, erosion sediment control permit, the applicant was required to submit a performance guarantee in the amount of five thousand dollars and an inspection escrow of five hundred dollars, and whereas on April one, twenty nineteen, the planning board granted the applicant a one-year extension of time to April one, twenty twenty, to complete the work contemplated under the erosion sediment control permit. And whereas the planning board engineer has conducted a final inspection of the property and by letter received eight, uh, May fourteen, twenty twenty-five, has confirmed that all work authorized under the permit has been con- uh, completed and all provisions of the permits have been met. And whereas pursuant to Town Code Section sixty-five dash eleven subsection C, such performance guarantee shall continue in full force and effect until a certificate of compliance shall have been issued by the authorized official after such consultation with only any agencies or individuals as he deems necessary to ensure that all provisions of this chapter and of the permit have been met.